Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item of business for tonight is to approve or amend the agenda. We do have a late personnel action that has come in, so I do need a motion to amend the agenda. Dennis, the second. Tim, any discussion? All in favor of amending the agenda? Any opposed? Can I get approval of the amended agenda? Can I get a motion to approve? Dennis? Pam? Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. At this point, we have public comment. We welcome and enjoy comments from the public. Do we have anybody who wishes to address the board at this time? Board member comments. Do we have any board members who would like to make a comment or report at this time? Superintendent's report.
Good evening, everybody. Let me just start out with talking a little bit about the entry plan. First of all, let me go backwards. I want to tell you, it's been a real pleasure to be here for the last month and a half. I've really enjoyed being here. The district is really great. And I'm really looking forward to working with the stakeholders from the district. As a part of my entry into the district, I've been continuing with the activities listed in the entry plan. And so I've been doing a number of interviews with folks, stakeholders, from across the district, which include parents, teachers, administrators, local political leaders. And it's been a real pleasure. I have really been learning quite a bit about the district. And I'm just looking forward to continuing to learn, and really, so that we can do a really great job for our kids. I have a couple upcoming additional activities that will be happening over the next week. Be doing some more work with business leaders, just trying to get out and talk to people from the community who are leading business ventures in the community. Also, be talking with more parents and just community members in general. So just continuing to work on that whole entry plan, and things are going very well. Second, I want to just give the board a little update. There were some questions around field trip approval, so just wanted to share that back in last October, there was a presentation given to the board, and there's some information in front of you on the table. Joe gave this presentation. Just wanted to kind of review the approval process that happens for field trips. You know, whenever we have just a walking field trip, that's a trip that goes through, for approval, the teacher and also the principal. Principal is the one who gets the final say on that, basically. If there are some school day field trips, again, the teacher, the principal, but also the superintendent is now a part of that piece there. For overnight field trips, teacher, principal, and superintendent approves those trips. And then those out-of-the-country field trips are approved by the teacher, the principal, superintendent, and Board of Education. Board, I want to make sure that you understand, if we're going to be doing some trips, especially those that are out of the state, I will be coming back to let you know that. We currently have a trip that's coming up, going to Disney with some of our cheerleaders towards the, throughout the year here. And so we'll definitely be making sure that you are aware of what's happening, what's going on. But these are the approval pieces with regard to trips. There are some trips that are, trips that are fundraised for. If they are school-sponsored trips, we try to pay for those to the greatest extent possible. So if there are some trips, like we have one going to Costa Rica, you may have some kids that do fundraising for that. Those kinds of things, again, they have to be approved by the superintendent. And so we are watching closely to make sure that people follow new rules and regulations. So I just wanted to share that with you, so that you'd have some feedback and background on the whole field trip piece. Any questions on that, from that discussion back in October at all? Great. Go ahead.
Jeremy had mentioned something about the Germany.
Jeremy had mentioned something about the Germany trip at the time, and the environment that was going on at the time in Germany. I mean, is that something that we always take in consideration? I mean, is that something that, I mean, I would, especially with the environment that's going on in this country, or in the world, I'd really like to see some kind of plan for that.
Absolutely. If there are issues that are happening in places that kids are going to, we would certainly be researching all that before, during, and even after, basically. So yes, if there are some challenges or concerns, the board would certainly know about that. And if there are issues, kids wouldn't be going to those places. So we do research before they go. I'm aware of that. And we would be continuing to do that, basically. So, yes. Any other questions on the field trip piece from the board? Good? Okay, the other piece that I wanted to share with you as a part of my report is the New York State assessment results. So the results came out this week from across the state. And, you know, the commissioner spoke about the results yesterday and a little bit today. What we know is that in terms of ELA data, for most districts, the data was flat. The average score was between 30 and 35 percent of kids that were scoring at the proficient level on the Common Core ELA exams. That's three through eight exams. And then with math, we saw that there was much more progress. You know, scores are higher. You know, in our region, we are scoring, you know, kids are scoring between, you know, 35 to 70 percent of them are proficient on these exams. In our district, we had some grade levels that were in the high 60s or the low 50s, basically. So even with those scores, they were the highest amongst the region, basically. The average score, just so you know, amongst the state, last year, there was 34 percent proficiency weight, or range, basically. So, you know, a rate, excuse me. So Wayne did well compared to others last year, and continues to do well compared to many, you know, even in the region. So the scores are out there. At our next board meeting, we'll come back, and Joe and I will give you a presentation about the scores and how we did as a district. And we'll look at subgroups of kids and just share with the board our progress. And we'll continue to work with our students and our staff. I honestly believe that Wayne has a really strong staff that will not only be able to meet the challenges around the Common Core, but that will exceed those challenges. I think our kids, if we continue to work together, and we look at our curriculum and our instruction, and continue to work with our teachers, who are really at the forefront of this, I think we'll do a really nice job. So we'll be back in September, and we'll share more about this whole piece around the exams. And there are some also newspaper articles out there. If you saw on the DNC today, there's a, it's like the front page is all about this whole testing piece. So we'll share more information as it comes out as well. All right. So that's the pieces that I have. And at this time, I think I'm going to bring Greg over to the table. I'm going to join him, and Nikki's going to join us as well at a point. And we're going to turn this over to Greg, who's going to give us the Assistant Superintendent for Business report. Okay?
Good evening. So tonight, as usual, it's our August board meeting, and it's time for us to set our tax rates, because the school bills will be going out in the mail at the beginning of September, and we will start our tax collection process. But before we got into that, I just wanted to share with you our financial results. These results have not been audited yet by our external auditor, but still, we feel confident that these numbers are accurate. And this kind of helps drive some of our decision-making. So you can see on the screen that our beginning fund balance was at 4.7 million. Revenues for the 2014-15 school year came in at 40,312,838. Our expenditures for the 14-15 school year, 43,121,215. We had money coming in from our reserves to help fund the budget. Three different reserves totaling 537,500. The actual reserves that that came from was 145,000 from our workers' comp reserve, 145,000, 42,500 for our unemployment reserve, and 350,000 from our retirement reserve for the employee's retirement system. And then we have bus purchases. Those come out of our bus purchase replacement fund. But as a capital fund, it's accounted for through the general fund. So they're listed here, so we get a correct general fund number. Our carryover encumbrances, things that were ordered in 14-15 that had not been delivered by the end of the school year. So that money gets carried over, so when they come in in the new school year, it doesn't come out of the new budget. It comes out of the budget from which they were ordered. That equals 212,515, so that gives you a subtotal of 2.8. And then we identified during the budget development process for the 15-16 budget to appropriate 1.1 million dollars towards reducing this year, to help this year's revenues and reduce the tax burden. We started out the budget process at a million. And when our state aid finally came in late in the process, we remembered the governor was holding those numbers, and we speculated what we thought was going to come in. We were off by 131,000, so we added it here. And then that leaves the remaining 1.7 million, which is our unappropriated fund balance. And technically, by law, that money, your school districts are allowed to hold 4 percent of the upcoming budget. This number does not represent 4 percent. We didn't have enough money left to keep the whole 4 percent, so this represents 3.7 percent. So this year, there is no excess fund balance to move around into any reserves. You know, this is in line with the corrective action plan that was approved by the board for the comptroller's audit to tighten down our projections, both in revenues and expenditures, and to spend at least 96 percent of our budget, which we did. We actually exceeded that a little bit. So it's important that we met the financial goals, because had we not had the 1.1 million for appropriated fund balance, it would have had a negative effect on our tax rates, because we would have had to raise more money in the levy. Now, it's unfortunate that we didn't have the 4 percent that we're allowed to carry equals 1.8 million dollars. It's down in the paragraph there. So we're about $122,000 short of the 4 percent. So still in good financial shape, but, you know, with the things that we've discussed over the last year with GANET and whatnot, you know, we want to make sure we're in the best shape moving forward as the GANET challenges face us.
Greg, if I can just add. So, Board, this, I know the goal was that we would spend 96 percent of our budget. This is actually 97 percent that has been spent, okay, in terms of the budget. So, you know, the 4 percent, we didn't reach, but we did. The goal was to make sure that the expenditures that we were expending as we moved along. And Greg and his team have done that, to make sure that that's there. And as he mentioned about, you know, GANET and things that are happening, one of the things we want to think about is that percent that we hold over, because we do want to be very fiscally conservative and make sure that we're ready in case something happens with the GANET. But at least at this time, the message that we want to make sure that you and the community get is that Greg and his team heard you loud and clear. You know, we not only did the 96, but it's actually 97 percent. So, you know, he met the goal of making sure that what we brought in, we actually utilized it.
And if you remember, during the budget development time, we anticipated what our estimated tax rate would be based on the information we had at the time. So we had told in our budget presentations that our tax rate was going to go up 2.86 percent, or 59 cents per thousand. What you'll see when we go to the next piece on the actual rate setting is our true value tax rate is going up 11 cents, or 0.52 percent. So from a tax rate perspective, we did better than what we projected at budget time. And the amount of our budget increase was exactly what we shared during the budget development time. Our budget went up 1.5 million dollars, which was a 3.28 percent budget-to-budget increase. That's exactly what we shared through the budget, the entire budget development process. Our tax levy went up 684,825 dollars. The exact number we projected during the budget development process and shared with the community. That levy increase did represent 3.48 percent on a levy-to-levy increase. So I know there were some questions that went around, but, you know, our levy's not going up 1.5 million dollars. It's going up 684,000. Our budget-to-budget increase was 1.5 million. And, you know, as I said, with the corrective action plan of far as tightening down our numbers and being more realistic with our estimates, I think we were able to meet that. There's, like I said, there's no money left to recommend to you to move around into any of our reserves at this point.
Do you have any questions on anything I presented here?
I do.
Yes.
It's on. I want to make sure I understand this, Greg, and I'm just going to generalize here. I think some of the criticism that the district has received in the past has been that we, in our budget, we say we're going to spend a million dollars of our reserves. And then at the end of the year, we say, hurrah for us, we spent a million dollars. But then we have 2 million dollars left over in excess funds, and then we replenished the reserves with 2 million dollars. And therefore, we didn't really spend a million dollars. We actually gained a million. So I think that's been some of the criticism in the past. In fact, I'm sure it is. So what you're telling me this year, I just want to make sure I understand this, because you'll have to tell me four times before I get it. But we budgeted for 537,000 out of our reserves. And we actually spent it. And we are putting no money back in our reserves.
That's correct. That's correct. So this is exactly what the comptroller likes to see. Now...
I can, I can, I've said this before, and I'll say it again. I like to see that number be at zero. I'd like to see us spend none of our reserves. I mean, I know we have to, and I know they've told us we should spend them down. But I've said it before, and I'll say it again. I don't care what they say. I want to keep that cushion for future traumatic events in this community. So I'm very proud of you for spending what you said you were going to. On the other hand, the more we keep, the better. I am also a fan of not adding to it. I'll make that very clear also, because that's also been a lot of criticism, is we've been adding to them. I certainly don't want to add to them. And I think it's good, given the past events that we've suffered, that spending half a million of it is fine. But, and it's even better that we didn't add to it this year. But I'm also a fan of keeping that cushion. But it looks good to me. Other than that, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Questions? Anyone else?
Okay, so at your place is you have a revised tax rate spreadsheet. And I apologize for the lateness of this, but actually, today, I received a call from Wayne County, because I sent them our information, and they proof it. And they called me back and said that after the tax rolls were finalized and printed and mailed out, Ontario made a change. They had omitted a star exemption for somebody. So they made that change and neglected to call us. So I had to revise the numbers, because it was an 8600 dollar change in the taxable value, meant about $187 in revenue. But it changes the proportion of how it's split amongst the six towns that make up Wayne Central. So I had to go through and actually revise this entire spreadsheet that is attached to the tax rate memo.
Board, let me just tell you that these revisions were posted onto our website, in addition to you receiving those, so we just want to make sure that it's out there. It is on the website, under the Board section, for stakeholders to see as well.
So if you flip to actually the second page of the spreadsheet, there's just a couple things I want to bring to your attention. You can see up in the top right-hand corner, it actually shows the comparison for the levy that is being proposed for the 15-16 budget and the previous levy. And you can see how that difference is 684,825, or 3.48 percent, as stated earlier. The other thing I wanted to mention to you is, if you remember, at our last communications meeting, Supervisor Smith from the town of Ontario was in attendance, and he shared with us that the equalization rate for Ontario was going to be changing. And actually, if you flip back a page, you can see at the very top, under Ontario, their equalization rate used to be at 100 percent, and now it's at 97 percent. So what that means is that properties that are listed on the assessment, some of the properties are undervalued. They're worth more than what the assessment is. So the state sets the equalization rate, and when that happens, to compensate for that, the state will lower the equalization rate. The impact that has, you take that 97 percent, you divide it into the 600 and, Amy, can we go back? You divide that into the assessed value, and it actually gets taxed as if the value was 680 million instead of 660. That's how the state adjusts for that. So I don't know exactly, because he didn't go into great deal, great detail back then. He did explain it to, I think there was about four or five board members that were there. So the Ontario tax rate is going up higher than what we anticipated, but through something that we have absolutely no control over. The board sets the levy, which is one-third of the equation. The assessed values come from the towns. The equalization rate comes from the state. All three of those are part of the formula to set the tax rates. So he, I believe, in the latest conversations with John Smith, he believes that next year, their issues will be resolved, and their rate will go back to 100 percent. When it's at 100 percent, everybody has the same rate per thousand. So you can see that Walworth and Williamson continue to be at 100 percent. Massedon did go down from 100 to 99, and Ontario went from 100 to 97. And that has a bearing on what that actual tax rate is at the end of the tax rate per thousand over there. But if you flip back to the second page, you can see that our projected, our true value tax rate was, for 14-15, was $20.66 per thousand dollars of assessed value. And the information before you that we're asking you to approve tonight would be a true value tax rate, which is over all six of the towns, of $20.77, an 11 cent per thousand increase, or 0.52 percent. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Massedon and Webster are such small components of our district that it really doesn't affect where there's a change in Ontario.
Correct.
Does have an impact.
That's correct. Ontario is by far the lion's share of... Ontario makes up around 69 point, if you go to the first page, the percent of true value, 69.44 of our 100 percent comes from Ontario. Massedon is 0.46 percent. Penfield is 0.31 percent. Webster is 0.46 percent. And you can find that information on the top of the first page of the spreadsheet there.
Thank you, Greg.
So we met our goals, you know, through the budget development process. You know, I think our numbers have come down like the corrective action plan wanted them to. You know, and moving forward, we know the challenges that face us with GANET. And Dr. Calvin and I have already talked about that moving forward, and some of the things, and the board knows. You know, Mr. Calvadi had shared some of the things about us, talking to our legislators and getting out in front of the issue. Our GANET revenue for the next two years stays the same. But then in the last two years of the pilot, it starts to decrease, and I believe we lose 2 million over the life of the four-year pilot. So that will be a bit of a challenge for us, but...
Great. And we'll certainly come back to the board and share with the board and have some discussion as to what the next steps are as we move forward over the next couple of years, for sure.
I got another question.
Sure.
I'd like to go backwards to the first page. I was listening to the last 10 minutes, but go back to the first page.
Okay.
So I want to make sure I understand the sheet right. At the end of it, it says excess fund balance is zero.
Yes.
But again, the actual number at the end of the year that was left over was 2.8 million. Now, we planned on having a million, and you already explained the 130,000, so let's just forget that's there. But we had 2.8 left in reality.
We actually had 1.1, because the 1.7 is already there. That 4 percent is already sitting there. It's included in that beginning number, fill of 4.7. It's there also. So that's not generated every year. What we generate is if we increase it, because our budget's gone up, and you can keep 4 percent of the next year's budget, so that number does climb a little bit. What gets added to it is that difference of 4 percent going to the larger number. But truly, what was left over was the 1.1 million, which was earmarked to be given back as an appropriate, to be appropriated against next year's tax levy to keep that tax levy lower. So we did have 1.1 million left over, but we planned on doing that.
We planned on having, yeah.
Yes. Well, the comptroller was never critical of that number. They were critical of the number at the bottom, which is sure zero.
The true excess. When it was, when it was after, after we took out our 4 percent, we still had 2 and 1/2 million left over.
Right, because that's when they said, well, you use money as a revenue and reserves, but then you just pumped it right back in. Which in essence is true, but there's a 12-month gap between when you use it and when you put it back in. But theoretically, what they say from a theoretical perspective is true. But I can tell you that if you look at your revenues and your expenses, 43 million in expenses and 40 million in revenue, you can't continue to do that. In a perfect world, you want that revenue and expense number to be very close. As you tighten down the budget, instead of having a discrepancy there and having money on the bottom, you really want those two numbers to be pretty close, pretty close together.
And if at all possible, you want to try to keep the expenditure piece lower than the revenue piece. So you're spending more according to this than what you've actually pulled in.
Right. Right. Okay. Thanks.
One more, Greg?
Yes, Tim.
Looking forward, what was, refresh my memory, what was our goal for next year, then? Were we going lower, when we're looking at the budget?
Lower for...
The target for leftover at the end. Was it 700,000, 900, I don't remember?
Well, the money that I've built in that helps create that 1.1, I've lowered that number. If that number was a million, I used to build a million in, in codes that I know wouldn't be spent. And then anything that wasn't spent by any of the administrative team would add to that. I now have built in about 600,000 of the million that we typically use. So I am now counting on our team not spending 400,000 dollars of money that's been budgeted to them. We're also counting on special ed students not coming to Wayne that might cost 50,000 to 75,000 a student.
And we want to be careful about the money, like he talks about the money from the staff, that administrators, they hope won't be spent. Some of that money, like, for example, in each of the schools, there is a, there is one teacher, one extra teacher in that budget. So there's like 60,000 dollars per school. So if a teacher goes out, has a car crash, something goes wrong, you only have one extra teaching spot in every school. That's pretty significant. What happens if you have two or three, right? What happens if you have five, six, seven, eight special ed students move in who you didn't expect? You know, the budget is very tight, and we understand the need to be conservative and be very tight. But some things you have no control over. So if you end up with 10 extra special ed students who need services, and we have to provide those services, you, again, when your expenditures are so much bigger, and you have very, less revenue coming in, and now you've got these tight pieces that he's built in, you really, you got to be careful with that, because you could really end up in a fiscal issue right away. We are certainly not saying that you need to spin, 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 but we want to bring that attention to your mind. What he has built in for each building is one teacher positioned at 60,000 dollars. That's not a lot of money if someone gets hurt, or if you need subs to cover it. That's not a lot, for it to be quite honest with you.
And the budget process this year was a little more exact with, by building than it has been, what we tried to do in order to meet those goals, right?
Right. And the thing that I think, you know, not to panic anybody, but, you know, there's certain things, like if special ed students move in, we can't say, geez, sorry, we didn't budget for that. You have to wait till next year to start services for the child. But, I mean, we can look at other areas of the budget, and maybe not buy as much copy paper. Or, you know, there are other things that we can do, that if, if a lot of unexpected things happen, you know, we can look and say, okay, geez, we were going to do this, we're not going to do that now. We'll have to hold off. So, but that's a change in the whole thought process. And our staff and our community are not used to, I mean, we as administrators, just like I think you as a board, you try to meet people's needs. So we're kind of used to trying to step up to the plate and meet people's needs. And sometimes that means spending money. What this means going forward possibly is, we might have to say no once in a while. Which is okay, as long as it's...
And one of the things that Greg and I have talked about, and with the administrators, and we'll continue to talk about, is, you know, we want them to really have a plan at the beginning of the year, because again, you only have that little amount put into that budget. So, you know, if there's things that come up, that are, you know, anomalies that can wait for a year, they're going to have to wait. You know, we, our goal is to make sure that we don't overexpend. So, you know... So, you know, we're getting our folks into the business of really thinking about what do we need throughout the year, what do we need at the beginning of the year, middle of the year, so that way when these things come up, they know they may have to wait for a little while. And we'll do that. And board, please understand that. Our goal is to certainly respond to the comptroller's audit. We want to make sure that we're doing very well. My goal as the superintendent is to work closely with Greg and you to make sure that we do that. But we want to make sure that you see both sides of the coin so that you understand what's happening as we move forward as a team together.
And Tim, just in response to your question, another thought. One of the things we tried to do was, when we talked with the administrators and started the budget process last year for this year, we tried to get them to kind of change a little bit of their practice and get things in, in the front end, rather than if there's stuff left over, what can we do to give us future budget relief? I mean, that worked, but it sent a perception that you were going shopping, which was not truly the case, but clearly sent that perception. So Mr. Calavati was very good about leading us through and saying, listen, ask for it, let's get it in in the front, have that discussion during all the budget development, so things aren't a surprise, and you know, things are more accurate upfront. And I think we're making progress on that.
The technology fund that New York State put in, have we heard anything on that yet?
There is the smart, you're talking about the Smart Schools Bond Act. That, we know what the allocation is, but first of all, you need to understand that's a reimbursement program, so you have to expend upfront, and then you get reimbursed for those funds. We have a series of applications that need to be put in, so the information has just kind of come up across the state, so we would need to go figure out, first of all, what's our tech plan? Put the tech plan together, look at the cost of it, put those applications that are needed to be in to the state, we would need to put those in. And then wait for the state for approval. Once they give us the approval, then you have to spend upfront and then get reimbursed. So we're at the very beginning steps of that whole process, like most districts across the state. There have been very discussions before I got here, but that's kind of where that is. So there is a chunk of money that's out there that we have access to, but we need to go through those steps first.
Now, when you say we got to spend it first, can that money come out of a reserve and not out of our budget, or does that have to come out of the budget? Or haven't they told you yet?
I don't know the answer to that, Dennis, because the regulations have been very slow in coming out, and I don't know.
Right. We're still learning each day, but what's, what we know is, I'm not sure where you have to get it from yet, we'll find that out soon, but what we know is that you got to spend the money upfront. So we're keeping in mind, in those buildings where there's only $60,000 to get that technology, you got to spend that upfront, right? So when you spend that, now you don't have money for a teacher if a teacher goes out. So, yeah. That's a good question. I think we'll need to check into that and find out.
I don't know the answer, but good question, Dennis. And I know that Joe is, is working with a district-wide team on recommendations. I think there was some discussion last year about who was on the team, and you know, we were at the very beginning stages of that because the information was very slow coming out from the state, but we have gotten some more recently, so I'm sure we'll be coming back and sharing more details of the plan.
Is there a time limit on that money? I mean, it's just whatever.
No, what they're talking about is it being multiple years to expend that, which is a good idea. You know, some schools have said, we want to get all of our computer stuff, or all of our technology upfront, or you can also put wings onto buildings, you can use it for preschool services. So some schools have said, I need it so bad, I'll get it right away. But what the hope from the state is, and what the guidance is that, you know, you can get it over multiple years, which is a good thing because we know you buy technology today, tomorrow, two months from now, and the technology is going to be obsolete. So we'd, I'd rather go over a number of years with that, but, so you don't have to do it all in one year to answer your question, Pam, you will have more time to spend.
Greg, is this the first time probably in the last 10 years that Wayne Central is carrying a, a fund balance that is less than what the law would allow us to do?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions on your, and I just want to stress that these are unaudited numbers, but you know, we're pretty confident there might be a few small changes once the audit's completed, but we would share that information through the whole audit process if that were to occur.
Great.
Okay, so the next item is school lunch prices and program considerations. And Amy, or Amy, excuse me, Nikki Wilson is here with, excuse me, Nikki Wilson is here with us tonight. Nikki's our school lunch director. I believe she knows most of you, or all of you. And this is information that is sent to the board every time at this year. We have to get our prices set, we put them in our news, our welcome, our welcome back newsletter. I'm also will be asking the board president to sign the free and reduce lunch program piece from the state. We are recommending, I left my packet over here, excuse me, an increase in our lunch prices. We lost about $7,000 in our school lunch program, and you never want to lose money, but compared to a lot of other districts, that is a very small number. Districts in our region have lost about 50, a lot of them $50,000, and they've had to get support from the general fund to stay afloat. We are not in that position. Even with the $7,000 loss, we still have about a $55,000 fund balance for the school lunch program. But Nikki and I have met, and you have a recommendation before you. We're not recommending any change in the breakfast price, but we are recommending an increase in the lunch price for middle and elementary students, going from $2.15 to $2.25. And so that's a 10 cent increase at the middle elementary level, and a 20 cent increase going from $2.30 to $2.50 at the high school. Those changes will generate approximately 16.5, 16 and 1/2 thousand dollars in additional revenue, but we also have some increases in our expenditures. Obviously, there's always a little bit of a balancing, you know, you try to keep it very affordable, but you have to be able to be profitable and still meet the nutritional needs, and that becomes a little bit more of a challenge with the Healthy Hunger.
Free Kids Act.
Free Kids Act, which has had a big effect on the menus. You want to share what happened on à la carte sales this year?
Well, the good news is our meal counts were up this year, according to, in comparison to last year. Our federal and state reimbursements were up because of that. After we did an analysis of some numbers, we found that our à la carte sales were down $40,000 this year. Smart snacks in schools started last year. We had that discussion when I gave you the board presentation. It has to be a fruit, a vegetable, whole grain, 100% juice, et cetera. So there are quite a few items that we chose and could not sell last year. One of the things that I, I've been really just trying to pinpoint what that is, it's in the middle in the high school, obviously, a majority of it, $28,000 was in the high school. Some of the items that we could not sell anymore were soft pretzels and cheese sauce. And one of the things, a conscious decision I made last year when we did the rebuild of middle school and high school kitchens is I eliminated ice cream. I always said I'm not in the ice cream business. I'm in the food business and the meal business, so thus our meal counts increased, but our à la carte sales were severely suffered. So I'm kind of torn, do I bring back ice cream just so I can increase my meal, my à la carte sales, or do we just continue on the path of serving healthy meals and just hope that we can increase our meal counts and gain some additional revenues by raising some meal prices where they should be? Part of Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act was what they call meal price equity. I'm not sure if you know what that is, but there is a complex formula that you have to input into the state ed website. If you are not putting any money from the general fund or any other sources into your school lunch program, you have to follow this formula. What the government is saying is that school districts are supplementing their meal programs with the free meal reimbursement, which is $3.13 per meal. There are a lot of school districts that are doing that, that have probably more than 50% free or reduced, so they're getting quite a bit of revenues from the state and federal government. That's not the case with Wayne Central. We're at 31% free and reduced, which is high for us. It's a new high for us. But the government and Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act said that, so until you reach that $3.13, that federal reimbursement, you have to slowly raise your meal prices according to the formula. You are allowed to round down to the nearest nickel. We have done that the last two years, forcing us this year to go up at the elementary level at least a dime. We would only have to go up 10 cents at the high school. That brings us to $2.40. If by chance we are financially solvent next year, we may not have to raise lunch prices since we are going up that and rounding up. So that's our hope.
You have a question on the, when did you start doing the vending machines?
Well, vending machines have been in effect since, I think, 2008.
Okay, now, was that, was there any increase in that? What kind of stuff is that, and did the kids buy that instead of the other?
Everything on campus, everything sold on campus during the school day has to meet that, that smart snacking in schools requirement.
But there's pretty good income, or revenue from those?
And honestly, we have a new treasurer, and I've asked her to start tracking that. So this year was the first year we've separated those vending beverages and food out from our à la carte sales. It was all lumped into that figure in the past. So this year, we have a benchmark to go by next year. I'm sure those sales did suffer as well.
Okay, thanks.
The food you're allowed to put in those vending machines can't be Twinkies and Ho Ho's and Red Bulls, right? I just, I still can't get past that.
Twinkies aren't whole grain.
I don't think the Red Bull is either.
Red Bull's caffeinated, we can't sell caffeinated beverages.
I was distracted six months ago when you talked to us about it, I'm still ain't. But I was hoping the answer, I was, yeah, it does, I was hoping the answer would be different.
Those cookies that you've had for dinner were whole grain.
I didn't have one. It just so happens I'm eating healthy, but anyway. I totally lost my train of thought, oh. So if we can't serve the good stuff, then how is it that we can bring back ice cream?
There are companies that are coming out with ice cream that meets their sugar, reduced sugar, reduced fat. They are smaller in portion size, so they meet the calorie parameters.
Okay.
So there are several items out there. We are in the process of a bid, and I believe Hershey's may overtake Perry's because Perry's isn't interested in selling healthy ice cream.
Okay.
Necessarily. So we're limited, even if we did sell ice cream at the high school and the middle school, we couldn't sell a Nutty Buddy. We could sell a sugar-free fudge bar.
And, but you do think that that would still increase the à la carte revenue? You still think kids would buy it as opposed to bring it in?
I do think so. I do. Phil, honestly, if Hershey's gets this bid, and we're in the process right now, I will probably seek some individual freezers to bring into the, at least to the middle school level. High school, I have a V8 frozen 100% vegetable and fruit juice that is a smoothie. We have that starting this year. I'm looking forward to seeing if we can increase some revenues on that, on that end.
Okay, thanks.
Nikki, I have, I have two questions. Is the free and reduce rate pretty consistent across the district, or does it decrease as the kids get older?
The rate does not decrease, the participation decreases. So this year is the first year that we have four schools that are qualifying for severe need breakfast. And the way you reach that status is based on your lunch participation. So if your lunch participation is 40% or more free or reduced, then you qualify for severe need breakfast status.
Okay.
That's going to give us another 31 cents for breakfast in reimbursement, so that's great. Four buildings, the high school is the only one that does, had, did not meet that status. Our big push is going to be increasing our breakfast. We, we're at 60% of participation in our lunch program, 60 to 65, and that's, that's pretty good, being only 31% free or reduced. I think we need some serious growth in that breakfast program.
Okay. The other question I have is, I think I've read or heard someplace that as the youngsters move up to the grade level, they get more accustomed to eating the healthy food, and so the participation rates are coming back up, but they're only coming up one year at a time. Are we seeing a similar trend or anything close to that?
I, I absolutely am. I, I'm, my heart is warmed by watching my students go, at the, even at our high school level, because we've been moving towards this trend for years, well before Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act started. I think the, you see a lot of students that are accustomed to having wheat bread, wheat pasta, our participation has not dropped on those meals, brown rice, it's not a problem. There is a whole grain exemption out there that you are allowed to apply for. I was not going to apply for it, however, I know that we are going to have a state ed review. I'm applying for croutons, because there is not a whole grain crouton out there, and I'm applying for breaded fish patties, because there is not a whole grain breaded fish patty out there. There are ones that have child matrician C unlabeled, but they're not whole grain breaded. Our chicken nuggets are whole grain, our chicken patties are whole grain. All of our breads are at least 51% whole grain. Those products are just not even available, so that's what I'm going to apply for. Not rice, not pasta, I'm not going to go backwards.
I had one of the cookies, by the way, and they were good.
They are great.
I just want to go back to revenue for just a quick second. You said there was a $7,000 loss this year. Does that include the vending sales too? It's all lumped in?
Yes.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if that was.
Separated.
Yes.
We have a 0% increase in our labor. I eliminated a four and 1/2 hour position this, this year, which is, if you take into consideration the wage increases, I believe it will be a flat labor schedule this year just because of that decrease in, in hours. I did some analysis on meals per labor hour and had to make some adjustments accordingly.
The next thing under the business portion of the superintendent's report is the Questar Agreement. In your packet, you have information from me concerning this. And just a brief, Questar is a BOSI service from the Rensselaer Columbia Green BOSIs, and it's a state aid planning service. It is a fantastic, I'm biased, but it is by far in my mind the best BOSI service you can get. These people are very good, they are connected to information in Albany. When things are happening in Albany with the budget and, and different things, you know, information sent out, you know, they're a great resource for us. So we've used this service for years, and through one of the accounting pronouncements, I can't remember if it was either GASB 34 or 45, GASB stands for the Government Accounting Standards Board. They said that school districts and municipalities had to now start recognizing the liability OPEB, which stands for Other Public Employee Benefits. So things like when people retire, you know, if they're on our health plan, if there's a payout for them for unusual days, or any things like that, we had to, a number of years ago, start recognizing those liabilities on our financial statements. We didn't have to fund them, but they had to be recognized, which is a standard practice in, in private business. What Questar did was, they, in their rates, were setting money aside against those future costs. But there was a ruling by the state ed department and the New York, and the comptroller that said they cannot do that, they cannot set the money aside out of their rates, they have to pay as they go. So for instance, if they have employees that have retired, they can't take next year's health insurance costs, and they have that money set aside, they have to pay it the year that the employee, that the cost is incurred. So because of that, they have to refund money back to the districts that use the service. So the agreement that you have before you will allow us to get a refund of $1,028.48 as they liquidate their money they had set aside for the OPEB based on the ruling from the comptroller and the state ed department, to put them on a pay-as-you-go basis, which is what everyone else is doing. So, pretty straightforward, but they are requiring us to have the board pass the agreement, which is in your packet, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about that. which is in your packet, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about that. And the last piece is the Merrick Round donation. Merrick Round is an arts and education program that the district uses at the elementary level, and we've used it for a number of years. We spend roughly about $35,000 a year through BOSIs. It's not run at the Wayne Finger Lakes, I think it's the BOSIs that's in Auburn. I don't know the name of that BOSIs, but, so anyway, and so when you spend the money through BOSIs, we get 67% of what we spend back the following year's aid. So when we started with Questar, or with Merrick Round, excuse me, one of the things they did was, they gave us a check for that unaided portion at the very beginning, which basically made us cost neutral, because you took that unaided portion plus the aid we were going to get, and if you put that together, it equals our cost. But they do have what they call a Merrick Round Playhouse remains committed to its unrestricted gift program. So on tonight's agenda, we're asking you to approve a gift of, I think it's around $11,000. So I called them to find out what this program is all about, and what they shared with me is they have two foundations. One is called the Emerson Foundation, the other one is Stardust. And these foundations were money that was given to them from benefactors who were heavily involved and committed and believed in the arts piece for schools. So they have a board that oversees the foundations, and they're able to gift back money from the foundations to help. They don't give us a total unaided portion, but the gift that we get from them on an annual basis is based on how much we spend. And our gifts have ranged from $8,000 to, this year it's 11. So that's just a little background, it's a wonderful program. You know, there's a whole menu of things that the elementary schools can choose from, from people that come in and do skits, puppeteers, I mean, all kinds of wonderful programs that are used by all three of our elementary and primary schools. So that's just a little history, I think there was a question that, wonderful program, very generous, you know, I couldn't thank them enough on the phone for everything they did, and, but that's, that's just a little background on why they continue and are able to continue to give money to help support the program.
I have to say, being a teacher, we did Merrick Round Theater in my school district, and not only do they provide wonderful programs, and especially, I mean, not so much in this district where I taught, there were children that never got to see real theater, and it just, it was so enriching. But they also can work along with the curriculum, which is phenomenal, so they provide a wonderful service.
Yes. Yeah, I appreciate the update, Greg, because I know I had, I think it was at least a year ago, might have been two years ago, I remember seeing it, and I had asked a question, and it seems like the answer was kind of along the lines of, that's a great thing, we get it every year. But it seems like at that time it was at least $9,000. When I saw that $11,000 number, I, I was a little interested in a little bit more background, because that is a substantial contribution or donation, so I appreciate the update. Thanks. You're welcome. All right, so I believe that concludes the business portion of the Superintendent's Report.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Thank you. I had to go to Board Business. The first item on the agenda is to approve the revised Board meeting schedule. I think primarily the reason for that is that we've decided that we're going to hold our meetings in this room this year, and so we have to approve the meeting schedule accordingly. The reason that we're choosing to hold all the meetings in here is to cut down on the labor for our custodial staff and setting up the cafeteria, as well as our tech people. So can we get a motion to approve our Board meeting schedule? Jeremy, second, Pam? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to approve the 2015-16 tax levy.
Do you think I should read all of this? You can, I could just, I think that's written.
Let me tell you that we do have a written resolution, and rather than read all of it, it is a resolution for the levy of 2015-16 school taxes, where the amount authorized to be raised for school tax purposes for the 2015-16 school year, where the current school year budget is a sum not to exceed $20,357,017. Can we get a motion to approve the 2015-16 tax levy? Pam, a second? Phil, any discussion? All in favor? Next is to approve the school lunch price increase, as mentioned by Greg and Nikki. Can I get a motion to approve the school lunch? Say, Dennis, a second? Carrie, any discussion? All in favor? Next is to approve an agreement with Questar. Can I get a motion to approve that? Carrie, a second? Pam, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. The Superintendent recommends approval of personnel action, CSE, CPSE, Treasury Report Minutes, Meetings, Gifts to the Diffrics, Wayne Finger Lakes Transportation Contract and Budget Transfers. Can I get a motion to approve? Dennis? Carrie? I volunteered, Dennis, I meant Jeremy. There's no discussion on that?
I could have a discussion on that. On the gifts to the district, what were they?
It was the Merrick Round donation, and the second gift was a-
Park bench from the Wayne Soccer alumni that donated a, not a park bench, a table. Picknick table. Picknick table. I just wanted to mention that, because I, I've been to the golf tournaments many times, and it's a great thing that they do, and it's great that they gave the effect of a-
The donation is a 46-inch square Uline picnic table, valued at approximately $800 from the Wayne Soccer alumni.
All in favor?
Can you make sure we do a thank you?
That's already been done.
It's already, okay. I don't know if we should say that every time, or it's just done?
She does it automatically, it's in our packet, I sign it every time.
I used to have to say it, so.
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Our committees have not started to meet, so I assume that we have no committee reports, except there's, Communications has a meeting schedule issue, I think.
Yeah, because we're going to have an executive session and then a training on the 10th of September, so I'll have to, I'll communicate with the Communication Committee about rescheduling that date, because we had one scheduled for tonight, and then something came up as well, so look for the change. I'll get it to you as soon as possible.
Do we have any other committee reports or information? Under Board President comments, because we approved the change in the meeting schedule, we do have, under law, we do have to visit each building. Last year, we chose to visit on the first day of school on the Teacher Orientation Day. We attended the orientation program, and then those of us who were able went and toured the buildings, and we did this at night, we had a tour for the other Board members. Is it our intent to do the same thing again this year?
As long as it's not as, because he's as new as-
As we are.
As new as some of us, so.
I agree with that. Okay.
It's fun, you have the right to boss.
Absolutely, I'm good with that.
And Jeremy gets the right of our experience. That's all I have under Board President comments. We are going to go back into executive session. You are welcome to stay, but I guarantee you that we are not going to conduct business coming out, so you may as well go home and watch reruns as to stay here and wait for us to come back out of executive session. Preseason football tonight, I understand it, so. At this time, can we get a motion to go into executive session? Dennis, a second? Carrie? All in favor? Thank you. Good evening, folks, thanks for attending.